It is 7:02 PM. Going to call the special city council meeting to order for the fiscal year 2018 budget submission on Wednesday, May 10th, 2017. Opening session is... Sorry. The pledge of allegiance will be done by Councilor at large Ian Abreu.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Council Abreu. We do have one letter to be read into the record. Council President Joseph Lopes, Honorable Members of the City Council. I am ready to inform you that I will be late to attend the special city council meeting on Wednesday, May 10th, 2017 due to an out-of-work commitment. Please read this letter... Please lead... That's right. Please read this letter into the record to make my colleagues and those in attendance and the public aware the reason for my tardiness. Council Dana Ribeiro, Council Ward 4.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Made by Council Martin, second by Council Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. In attendance we have Council at large Linda Morad, Council at large Naomi Carney, Council of Ward 3 U Dunn, Council at large Debbie Coelho, Council of Ward 1 Jim Olivera, Council of Ward 2 Stephen Martins, Council of Ward 5 Kerry Winterson, Council at large Ian Abreu, and Council at large Brian K. Gomes. Item number 1, communication, Council President Lopes to City Council Farias, City Clerk Farias requesting that a special city council meeting is called for Wednesday, May 10th, 2017 at 7:00 PM for the submission of the 2018 fiscal year city new benefit budget. Motion to receive and place on file.
So move.
Made by Council Olivera, second by Council Winterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I would like to designate Council of Ward 3 U Dunn and Council of Ward 5 Council Winterson to escort the mayor down from his office down to the city council for his greetings and the presentation of the 2018 fiscal budget. Council Dunn and Council Winterson, please. While they're going up, we'll take a recess. Call this meeting back into order. It is 7:11 PM. Recognize Council Winterson and Council Dunn. Council Winterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're ready to introduce the mayor of the city of New Bedford. I'd like to specifically honor the 2018 budget coming up this fiscal season. We want to recognize and bring in the honorable John Mitchell.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you. Council President Lopes, honorable members of the city council, department heads, invited guests, and residents of New Bedford. I'm pleased to stand before you tonight to present a municipal budget for the city of New Bedford for fiscal year 2018. This year's budget builds on the highly collaborative effort between the administration and the city council that began last year and has continued in earnest. Our collective work has been grounded in our recognition that the city must continue to steer itself through rough financial waters, which requires a deliberate approach by both branches of municipal government to develop a budget that is squarely aimed at long-term stability. Unfortunately, too many American cities, including some right here in this state, have forgotten this or overlooked it and have landed themselves in deep trouble. Now, we just heard last week of cities that have issued a large number of pink slips to municipal employees. We in New Bedford have been living through a period of tight finances in part because of past neglect and poor planning. There are hundreds of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance in buildings and in roads in our city. We have retiree benefit obligations that are larger because they weren't funded sufficiently in years past. And we have underinvestment... We had underinvestment in schools and basic services for too long. So, like it or not, we have to deal with it. But the good news is, we are catching up. There's no doubt about it. What makes it harder is that in Massachusetts, cities and towns wield far less control over their finances than their counterparts in other states. Approximately three-quarters of our general fund budget this year is predetermined by state mandates and regional agreements. And when you set aside the Public Safety Department budgets, which are driven in part by a very strong arbitration regime that puts municipalities at a very severe disadvantage, nearly 30 public... 30 non-public safety departments split the remaining 13% of the budget, which is depicted here. Now, so this chart is a riff on the pie chart that you have in your budget letter and that you're all familiar with. But what it really depicts very precisely is how much of that budget in the green that we, the city council and the administration, actually control. That's what... That's where the debate is, over that small sliver. And that's not good. And that's what we're dealing with because in Massachusetts, we have a system where cities just don't have the authority to deal with the bigger budget items. So, revenue, while we're talking about this, there's the revenue side. So, revenue to the city has not kept pace with rising costs. Unrestricted state aid has remained relatively flat. It's gone up just a little bit. And the ongoing expansion of our local economy has not yet translated into new revenue from property taxes. Despite all the growth, despite the drop in unemployment, the creation of lots of jobs and all the projects and all the activity, the tax revenue just hasn't gone up in ways that you would expect. And we're certainly not alone in that way. So, we've made lots of sacrifices along the way, as we must. And over the last few years, certain city departments have been cut to the point where their ability to function is becoming compromised. And of course, taxpayers have been imposed upon as well. And city government has shrunk. So, today, there are some 136 fewer positions paid for out of the general fund than there were in 2009. And there are far fewer municipal employees than there were in the early 2000s. It's a much smaller municipal workforce these days. So, when you hear people assert that city government is loaded up on employees, you can tell them it's actually quite the opposite. In the long run, neither indiscriminate program cuts nor reflexive tax increases will lead to long-term sustainability. It just won't. And we've achieved tremendous efficiencies in city government as well, thanks to the department heads that you see here and thanks to Ari's financial team. But the efficiencies can only take us so far. If you, for instance, want to keep a library in a particular neighborhood, there's no getting around the fact that it has to be staffed with a librarian. You can't downsize the position away and still have a functioning library. On the other hand, we can't continue to ask more of taxpayers and expect that the city budget decisions won't materially affect their quality of life or the competitiveness of small businesses. So, achieving sustainability by balancing these competing interests requires thoughtful and often difficult decisions, which must be explained to the public with candor and with clarity. Now, if this presentation thus far sounds a lot like what I said last year, there's a good reason for it. And that's because of the growth of... Because of the growth of non-discretionary spending, the gray part, the tan part over here, it's a fairly static budget. There are no grand expansions of services. There are no broad initiatives. It's not that you and I don't have new ideas that we'd like to see implemented, it's just that right now, the constraints on us don't afford us the ability to try out new things that cost us a lot of money. That's just the reality that we are faced with. So, for the record, the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget totals approximately $362 million, of which the general fund is the single largest component at approximately $324 million. The general fund budget received a $9.1 million increase in state funding, which consists largely of additional support for the school system and not so much unrestricted state aid. As in recent years, this year's budget has been marked by considerable restraint in spending. So, there's virtually no additional spending in those areas over which government exercises nearly full authority. And that again is the green slice right there. The problem, this really has to be emphasized, is that is with what we can't control. What's driving spending, indeed what is crowding out everything else and putting increased pressure on taxpayers, are the obligations that are dictated largely, if not entirely, by state policy. And that's what this chart depicts. So, you see over here, so for those of you in the back, just work with me. So, the big one right here are schools, which is somewhat different from the other three. So, the school department, so about 84% of that is funded by the state and another almost 7% or 8% by the federal government. So, the growth here is not so much in municipal spending and spending from our own tax levy. Those other three are. And so, we're talking health insurance, pensions, and charter schools. And that's what's crowding out everything else and putting tremendous pressure on us. So, first, let's talk about each one of those. So, the growth of employee healthcare costs has accelerated over the last year especially. Medical claims have increased significantly, and the city's share of premium costs is projected to increase $3.5 million over the FY '17, the current year budget. Second, the city's pension assessment will increase by approximately $1 million as the city continues to meet its funding obligations to the regional retirement board. Pension eligibility and benefit levels, as you know, again, are dictated entirely by state policy. And then third, the charter school obligations, the topic that we talk about all the time, they continue to divert a growing share of funding away from our public school system. All the discussion about what the needs of the school system are and how much more we would have to spend could be fulfilled if it weren't for the fact that we've had charter schools imposed on us and that have sucked a tremendous amount of resources out of our school district. The growth in that, our obligations to charter schools, is exacerbated by the fact that the state has failed to meet its statutory obligation to partially reimburse those locality costs. Remember, the state is obligated, or the state law, there's a rule, at least a policy, that there's reimbursement of 100% in the year one of new charter school expenses and it goes down to 50%, then 25, 25, 25. That's all great, and that makes it... Even if those amounts were fully funded, charter schools in effect would be an underfunded mandate, right? You don't get fully reimbursed. But the problem is, the state doesn't even fund those obligations. So, as a result of all that, the city's net obligation will increase from $10.5 million in this year, FY '17, to nearly $12.1 million in FY '18. It's going up by a lot. So, spending in our schools, just one last point about schools, will increase some 6% or $7.7 million, but it is supported by a significant boost in state aid as a result of, again, a second year of recounting of English-language learner students. So, that helps. While the school budget is set at the state mandated net school spending level, again, certain areas need more support. There's no doubt about it. I think we were able to fund important areas that will accelerate the reform effort in our schools, which has been going on for four years now, including the expansion of instructional technology, the addition of ELL teachers, and the introduction of a new science curriculum. And on that note, thank the council for its matching funds for the expansion of school technology at the high school. I think that will make a big difference. So, how do we achieve our primary goals? Step back and look at all this, this year, next year, and so forth, in the foreseeable few years. So, how do we achieve our primary goals, which are to continue providing the first-rate services our residents expect, to ease the demands on cities' taxpayers, and to support the city's steady growth through key investments? So, I believe there are five prongs to our strategy in the next years and the years ahead. This year's budget reflects this approach. So, the first is that we have to continue to budget really carefully. And that's somewhat stating the obvious, but it really is incumbent upon us really to try hard and to think through these problems. So, for those of you who have been on the council for a while, you may remember the days when an administration would load up on new spending in the proposed budget in the hope that the council would end up somewhere in the middle. And, you know, there's an understandable pragmatism underlying that approach, but when the budget is as tight as it has been, it's... I don't think it's the right way to go. In my view, the public interest dictates that the administration clearly identify new spending and explain why it is being proposed. And that's been our approach, and we will continue to strive to do that through hearings and through meetings with our financial team and through department head meetings. This year, a meager amount of non-discretionary spending is being proposed, and only on one of two grounds. So, this is spending again in the green slice, right, where we have control. And so, those two grounds, the new spending will be based on either the fact that the new spending will actually save the city money in the long run, or it is needed to restore a previously cut core service to a bare minimum level. Again, we're not talking big expansions here, service expansions. So, in the course of the council's budget hearings, you'll have a chance to dig into the details, but let me offer a couple of examples of what I mean. So, the new budget proposes the addition, and this is just an example, of a training officer in the personnel office. So, you might say, "Well, under our current fiscal constraints, like, why would... Isn't that a luxury?" Right? So, I would submit, and this is... You'll hear more about this from Sandy Vazina when she comes in, is that with better training, our employees will be less likely to make mistakes that might lead to expensive lawsuits for the city. It's a... It's really a measure about risk management. So, we want to avoid lawsuits because from time to time, you know, because you've had to fund the payouts from time to time, we want to reduce that, and having a training officer is a step in that direction. But that's just, again, just one example, and you'll hear more detail from Sandy. When it comes to the restoration of core services, take a close look at the library budget, where there are a couple of new positions being proposed. So, the library system just completed, as you know, a strategic planning study that recommended certain investments to enable the system, which has lacked real investment for a long time, to provide the basic services its patrons expect. So, for instance, the budget proposes a youth services librarian, something that every person in the library system, including Olivia Meller, will tell you the place needs and has needed for a long time. Now, you've probably heard it from them before, I'm sure. All of you guys go into the libraries. The reason for this is simple. Any respectable library system has to make its services available to kids. It's a core service. Given that our school libraries are decidedly understaffed, if they're open at all in some cases, it's important that a library system have the capacity to connect with kids for reasons that we're all familiar with. So, these are just a couple of examples. There are others in the budget that are readily identified, but the main point is, this stuff, in the way of new spending proposals, is hardly ambitious. It really is just peanuts in the context of the entire budget. The most urgent problem in this year's budget, and this is the second point, involves the city's healthcare program, which has experienced significant increases in claims expenses over the past year and whose budget is projected to go up by 9.8% in FY '18. 9.8%. If left unchecked, it will inevitably crowd out our ability to provide basic services and will lead to a significant tax increase. It will also enlarge what is already an enormous looming liability associated with retiree healthcare. As much as we've done together on OPEB, it's only going to get worse if we don't do something about it. Now, you might note that healthcare is an area, as we've discussed, where state policy makes it very difficult for a municipality to manage. And of course, you're right on that. But the state does make it practically impossible for us to change the city's share of employee premiums as private sector employers can and do. But there was one arrow left in our healthcare quiver. Under Section 21 of the municipal healthcare reform bill of about five years ago, a city has the authority to work with its collective bargaining units to redesign employee healthcare plans so that employee healthcare is less costly to city government and better tailored to the needs of employees. It would require a vote of the city council to accept Section 21, which many, if not most, of the communities in the state have already done. This is one of the one things that we can do to get our arms around the healthcare problem. My administration will have a proposal before the city council in the weeks to come to begin this process, and our financial team will be reaching out to you to explain the rationale behind this and really get into as much detail as you see fit. The third point, the third imperative of our fiscal strategy is advocacy at the state level. Other than accepting Section 21, we have little wiggle room on healthcare, as I noted, and the other state, as well as on the other state drivers of our budget, namely charter schools and pensions. It is therefore incumbent upon us to speak up through our state delegation, through the legislative leadership, and through the Baker administration. We just can't stand silent, and we have to join with other communities that are similarly feeling the pinch to amplify our message. And we have to start talking about this now because my fear is that when the business cycle, the national business cycle, or at least the northeastern business cycle starts to turn, then people are really going to feel it. And if we're out there ahead of it, then we'll be in a much better position to adjust. We also need to become more efficient still. Our efficiency reforms in the last few years have helped restrain spending, ensure accountability, and have improved transparency through the city government, throughout city government. The list is long, but they prominently include the citywide performance measure initiative, the city's solar energy program, voice-over internet service, payroll modernization, targeted organization of city government, and the list goes on and on and on. And it's been happening with a steady drumbeat. But we need to keep pushing. We need to keep pushing further still. There are a couple of areas in this budget that touch upon this. We've come a long way in the development of performance management in city government, and Christina Mills has done a fabulous job, as you've seen, in guiding city departments and focusing on their core missions and quantifying what they do, just like the private sector. To see the improvement, you need to look no further than the budget book yourself, which I don't think you've gotten yet, but you will, obviously, soon. So, compare this year's version of the budget book to the one that the council got five years ago. So, it's entirely different. It now spells out for the reader in plain English what the departments do and how well they're doing it in ways that are readily quantifiable. And it's a reflection of the level of transparency and accountability our residents expect and deserve. So, we need to continue to build our capacity to modernize our measurement of services and our management of it all. You just have to take the next steps in that general direction, and I think there'll be more detail coming on that as well. And I also firmly believe that despite all the efficiency measures that we've implemented, we need to take a hard look to see whether we've missed anything over the last few years. And as I've said before, and as I believe, I know you do, that New Bedford should have the most efficiently-run city government in the entire state. And that's what we owe our residents, who expect that their hard-earned money will be fully utilized. To that end, we have included in the budget funds for an outside consultant to perform an analysis of our operations, basically to see, yeah, did you... There's some stones you haven't turned over, whether it's consolidating departments, whether it's scheduling issues, whatever it is, realignment of any sort, we need to know. And if they find anything that we can do better, that's great. The study will have paid for itself. And if it doesn't find anything, it'll give all of us, including and especially the residents of our city, the confidence that we've done everything we can to make the most out of every taxpayer dollar, and they need to know that. So, having somebody come in from the outside on short money is well worth it. The last thing is the dialogue between branches of city government. And it's as important as anything else. We need to continue working on all of this together because it's hard. It is really hard these days. The dialogue between the council and the administration has no doubt improved markedly of late, and we need to build on a common understanding of our financial challenges. My financial team will be readily available to answer your questions, as well as work through the budget in the coming weeks. And as I've said before, please don't hesitate to sit down with us and go through whatever. We want to make sure that everybody has a common understanding, and that gets communicated directly to the public because people need to know. So, I conclude by acknowledging that if you just happened into town and heard my remarks just now, you might think that this was a city on the ropes. I get the tone. But we, of course, know better than that. This city is undergoing a remarkable resurgence. And we've seen the creation of nearly 5,000 jobs in the last five years, a decline in crime, the highest bond rating in the city's history, a stronger school system, and everybody is noticing it. And every time I go up to Boston, I hear it stereo, "What amazing things going on in New Bedford." You hear it all the time. It's great. I know you hear it as well. So, I'm highly optimistic about the city's prospects, and I believe that that optimism, as you do, is well-placed. My words of concern about the city's finances are not an expression of pessimism, but are meant to state with clarity what I believe is necessary for us to continue our positive momentum. The key for us now is to understand that the rebuilding of our city is taking shape, and that together, we're making the right moves, and we've been able, together, all of us, been able to think two or three moves ahead in ways that other cities aren't doing right now, and that's going to pay off in the long run. But it will continue to require a steady hand on our finances. We are clearly on a healthier, more sustainable path that will lead to a more effective and responsive city government and a higher quality of life for our residents. I thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to the work ahead in the next few weeks. Thanks, everybody.
Item number 2, order appropriating $307,937 from ordinary revenue and municipal receipts of fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, for payments of current expenses of various municipal departments. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Gomes, second by Council Coelho. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 3, order appropriating $996,300,000 in 12 equal monthly increments from airport receipts of fiscal year '18 in the airport budget. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Olivera. I didn't hear the second. I apologize. Second by Council Abreu. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Number 4, order appropriating $21,684,118 in 12 equal monthly increments from wastewater receipts of fiscal year '18 in the Department of DPI Waste Budget. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole.
So move.
Made by Council Coelho, second by Council Winterson. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 5, order appropriating $13,559,983 in 12 equal monthly increments from water receipts of fiscal year '18 in the DPI Water Budget. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Olivera, second by Council Winterson. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 6, order appropriating $906,141 in 12 equal monthly increments from the Enterprise Funds Receipts of fiscal year '18 in the Downtown Parking Account. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Abreu, second by Council Coelho. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 7, order appropriating $100,000 in 12 equal monthly increments from the municipal receipts of fiscal year '18 in the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Fund. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Ribeiro. Second by Council Carney. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 8, order appropriating $15,000, now standing to the credit of the account of CCDA Traffic Handicap Parking, as follow. $0.00 to the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities Salaries and Wages. $15,000 to Commission for Citizens with Disabilities Charges and Services. $0.00 to the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities Supplies and Materials. To refer to the quasi-committee of the whole. Made by Council Olivera, second by Council Ribeiro. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We'd also like to welcome Council Ribeiro, who came in. Thank you, Council Ribeiro. Seeing nothing else on the agenda...
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn made by Council Martin, second by Council Dunn. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned at 7:38 PM.